Excellent. So with that, I will say please rise and join me in the pleasure of pleging this corner here. Please rise. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'm not sure who our recording secretary is. I'm excellent. Okay. Honorable Ethan. Okay, thank you. Thank you so much. Please call the roll.
Chair Sarah Pio. Present. Hi, Chair Peter Richard.
Present.
Senator Kiyafi.
Present.
Sabrina O'Kamp. And Regina Park.
Present.
And our chair commissioner here.
Thank you so much. So we are holding meetings in person as is evident. If you are interested in speaking during public comment, complete a request to speak form and submit to the recording secretary. There are those yellow sheets. They look like that. They're out on the table here. Our first item is a ceremonial one that will be led by our park director. Do you want to agree?
Great, thank you. Happy to be here, everyone. Nice to see you. I'm delighted to be able to introduce to you tonight our new community services manager, Zach Silbeck. He's sitting in the back row there. Zach has his bachelor's degree in recreation and master's in public administration. And he's been in the municipal recreation industry for nearly 20 years. And he's worked for special district in the cities of Los Altos, Fremont, and Pleasanton in a variety of roles, programs, and services. And his background in leadership, program development, and community engagement makes him an excellent addition to our team. So we're very excited. So Zach, can you say a few words?
Great, thank you. Thanks for the direction this evening, commission from the public. Nice to meet you all. Just to highlight a few things, I had opportunities to work in several cities, different sizes, serve, you know, different ages, from youth to seniors, oversee historic sites, nature programs, and brand new facilities. So really looking forward to working with you all, the commission, communities, to serve San Mateo and continue to grow in your support. So very nice to meet you.
Thank you. Welcome. Thank you all. I'm sure I look forward to working with you. And I would say San Mateo was a great one. So I'll agree, and I'm not biased. And my understanding is also a great city to work. So welcome and thank you all. First, thank you. With that, we'll go to the second item on our agenda, the approval of regular meeting minutes from the November 6th meeting, which is somehow the last time we met. It feels like a very long time ago now. I will ask, does anyone have a motion to approve?
Absolutely.
Please call the roll.
Peter Richard.
Aye.
Senator Kiyafi.
Aye.
Sarah Pio.
Aye.
Sabrina O'Kamp.
Aye.
Regina Park.
Aye.
Motion carries. Five, two.
Excellent. Next is public comment. Members of the public wishing to comment on any item not appearing on the agenda may address the commission at this time. State law prevents us from taking action on any matter not on the agenda. Your comments may be referred to staff. The follow-up to public comment is limited to a total of 15 minutes. However, an opportunity for additional public comment may be provided later in the agenda. Do we have any non-agendaised public comments?
No, Mr. We have not received any now of a comment.
Excellent. Very good. Okay. Then let's move on to item number, I will close public comment and we'll move on to item number three. Which is probably, I imagine, the reason for many of your attendance this evening, Be Shoreview Skate Park Update Project, project update and improvement prioritization approval. And we will hear from the project manager, King Long, to present. Let's hear your presentation.
Good evening, everybody. And I see a lot of the skating community here. So welcome. I appreciate that. I like your band shirt there. It's cool. So we're going to start with a little presentation here just to get you all updated. And by the way, it would be appreciated if you, I know you guys will have questions, but if you could just hold until the presentation is over, then we'll kind of do a question once approved. Thank you for that. So Shoreview Skate Park, you guys are familiar with it, right? Okay. So next slide, please. Some background. So Shoreview Skate Park has been in the community for 70 years, right? We have targeted this as a capital improvement project for quite some time. And in 2023, our design consultant, Zach Warmboot, that's quite a mouthful, was hired to do some public outreach, design development, construction documents, bidding, and construction support. That's his scope for work. That's his contract. Now Zach is with us via Zoom tonight. So once we're done with this presentation, if you have any questions specific to Zach, he will be more than happy to respond to them. So. And by the way, Zach and his company, Warmboot Design, is a internationally known skate park designer. They have facilities, design facilities throughout California, Israel, and other international locations. So he's quite qualified. We're lucky to have him. Next slide, please. We, Zach did community engagement. He conducted a community survey. There were 66 participants in that first survey. And out of that, through an online survey and on input from you guys, there were three most commonly suggested improvements. One, replace the surface. I hear and I see the emails, the other comments, that it's rough and has cracks and gaps. So it's not a smooth skating experience and wears out your wheels. Expanding the skate park. The skate park is a very unique design. It's street elements. It's not turn, I'm not a skater, so I might butcher some of these features. It's not half pipes or anything, you know, that is at the skate park. This is a unique skate park. And then the third option is installation of lighting. Because you guys are just limited to daylight hours, and you know, you guys, some of you guys work, some of you guys go to school, want to skate at night. Not possible. There was also a community meeting that was held. 11 attendees, I believe, attended that. There's general satisfaction with existing and unique street style layout. The attendees echoed that from the survey, they're expressing a desire for resurfacing and paving, expansion, and more lighting. Next slide. So let's go into the possible improvement options. Number one is replacing the existing paving. The pavement replacement would be everything in blue. The items in gray in the middle are the existing street elements, and those will not be replaced because we think that it's an asset. There is also comments about improving the approach into the skate park. Which, if you see there, there's this repaved tree approach. There's a rough patch of asphalt paving there that you guys presently use, if you want to understand, to get speed, to go in and launch into elements. And also, there is a raised tree planter there that gets in your way. So we would propose to remove that raised planter and the tree just to create a wider access so you can facilitate your entry point. That is option number one. Please note that option number one does not currently include additional lighting. Next slide, please. Option number two is the expansion of the skate park. Now, the area that is left of the existing basketball court is the proposed area. Right now, it's a lawn area with trees and shrubs. In order to expand the skate park, we would need to demolish the landscaping, which would be and some, some improvements to gain access into that area, which would be some concrete walls, some fencing, then you'd have to demolish, remove the trees, remove the lawn irrigation system shrubs and dirt to create, degrade, to install the new paving and a turnaround. I don't, I'm not sure which, what do you guys call that?
Quarter pipe.
Quarter pipe, okay. So, and again, this option does not include light. And you can see from the price tag, there's a range, a range of magnitude of 200 to 220, depending on what we'll get as our contract bids. Next slide, please. Option three would be adding more lighting to the existing skate park. The lighting system would be LED. It would be tied to the grid. And it's sports level lighting. So it's pretty bright. I don't have the exact technical jargon for you, but it's at least like one foot candle. It's pretty bright. You can read books underneath that light stuff. And it would go on at dusk and be turned off at when the park closes. Whatever that, whatever that time is. Now, this, that I mentioned, that the lighting would currently is not in the expanded area. It's just for this area only. And this price tag is 200, 240. So. Next slide, please. So for tonight, we're going to be requesting commission direction to recommend the prioritization options one of three. The prioritized order is replacement of the flatwork, repaving. And that was the most popular response requested improvement, approximately 20 responses. Option number two, expansion of the skate park, was, we received 19, approximately 19 responses, and installation of lighting approximately eight. Staff's recommendation is prioritizing the replacement of the flatwork repaving as this aligns with the community input and addresses the need for surface improvements. And that concludes our presentation. And I'll look it back to you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. I'll just quickly go over sort of what happens next, and it's useful for members of the public, especially if it may happen to be your first public meeting. So next, we'll have, we will open public comment. We are only taking public comments in person. Great. Okay, we're only taking public comment in person. You'll have, depending on how many speakers we have, you'll have probably between two or three minutes, which I will determine once we know the total number of speakers. Staff will then respond to questions, concerns, issues raised in public comment. Then the commissioners will be able to ask questions and make comments about the presentation, what we've just heard, and then we'll have a chance to discuss and agree. Per the presentation, the charge of this study session is to prioritize those three sort of areas of improvement. The staff recommendation is sort of one, two, and three as first, second, and third priority. So I will just let everyone know, if you want, if you wish to make a public comment on this item, if you have not yet filled out one of these yellow sheets, you must do that. So I'm going to take a moment to say, if you have not filled out a sheet, fill out a sheet. I believe they're on the table right up there. And now I will say, and since I've seen no one get up, that means we have all the sheets that we need. How many public commenters do we have this evening?
We have seven.
Seven. That means you each get three minutes. That is a long time to speak, so do not go over your three minutes. I would, as chair, ask that if you have one or two of these items that you think are really a top priority, please include that in your public comment. And with that, let's begin public comment.
The first person and second person, so that person's ready, will be Max Pavros and following in Ethan's person.
And please come stand up here so the commission can hear you.
There will be a timer on your screen, so, so you can.
And we're all included in the group.
So it's individual public comment.
So they each have something to read?
Yes.
But in order together, like the four of them, they all made a card.
Yeah, I have the order. I have is Max Pavros, Ethan Parton, Joseph Pavros, and Ryan Parton.
That's fine. Yeah, that's fine. Please.
Good evening, members of the council, city officials, and our fellow community members. Thank you for allowing us to speak today at this meeting. My name is Ethan Parton, and I am joined by my brother Ryan Parton, he's over there, and my friend Joseph and Max Pavros. We are here as a group of community advocates to present an exciting proposal to enhance the Shoreview Skate Park by adding bicycle-friendly features, because we're bikers, including a pump track.
Our proposal stems from the growing interest in BMX and mountain biking within the community, particularly among the youth. The Shoreview Skate Park currently does not accommodate for bikes, but a pump track is a perfect addition. It's versatile and enjoyable for people of all ages and skill levels. Adding features like a pump track would create a space that's truly inclusive for all types of riders.
And then we have Ethan and Ryan.
Having a pump track will promote health and fitness and provide a safe place for riders to practice their skills. The street can be very dangerous by driving. A pump track provides a safe environment where riders can develop their skills without the risk of driving on busy streets. This project will help the people stand a fairer way of being. In conclusion, we believe that adding any bicycle-friendly features and pump tracks to our, to the Shoreview Skate Park in valuable investment in our community. Encourage outdoor recreation for people of all ages. We're excited about positive, positive impacts this, to this project could have in our community. Thank you for your time, and we would be happy to address any questions or comments you might have.
Thank you.
On, we have Anthony Abrumson.
Hello, everybody. My name is Anton Abrumson. I want to start by saying, I'm not actually a San Mateo resident. I'm currently a resident of San Francisco, and I grew up in Cupertino. I've been coming to San Mateo since about 2012, specifically because of the skate park. I agree with what your assessment. It is a very unique skate park. I think there are other parks in the Bay Area that cater to different styles of riding. You have Menlo Skate Park, just 20 minutes south. That skate park is about 75% transition. It fills that void. I do hear the pump track requests. Menlo Atherton very recently just built a very nice pump track. You guys should check it out. It's really nice, actually. As far as the, the three plans for, the three options that we have here, I kind of have an issue with the resurfacing. A part of the plan is to resurface the sidewalk, which is strange to me because the sidewalk is outside of the skate park. Additionally, you guys put skate stoppers on that side of the ledge. You explicitly told us not to skate on this side of the park. Yet now you're saying that you guys are going to fix this sidewalk for us. Doesn't really add up. I think it's a waste of a really big budget. Ideally, me and my friends here are here to advocate for lights. We are working class. Before that, we were in school. We would like to keep coming to San Mateo and supporting local businesses. When we come to Shoreview, after we're done, we go to Ike's Sandwiches, get a sandwich, then we go to Yi Feng, go get a boba, and then pop into Atlas to see what new product they have, you know? We come from other cities to support your guys' local economy, specifically because of the skate park. If you guys install lights, we can continue coming for years. You know, during the week. Right now, three, four months out of the year, we can't do that. There are not many skate parks in the Bay Area that do have lights, so I do think it's a really big priority. I do think that if resurfacing the park, if that is a higher priority, I would really hope that we could come to a middle ground where we resurface the skate park that needs to be done, but ignore, there's a plan to redo the sidewalk. I, I don't see the point of that. There's also a plan to remove the little planter and the tree, also unnecessary. I would really like to see that part of the budget go into the lights. I saw online, you guys mentioned that you have a budget of about $446,000. None of the three options reach that are over that budget. And I think that if you guys didn't do the sidewalk and that planter from the resurfacing, and instead focused the, the rest of that budget onto the lights, I really think that we can make both options happen. I don't see the need to expand skate park. Like I said, there are other skate parks in the Bay Area that fulfill that need. I really enjoy the current layout of the skate park. It's very unique. It's very oriented towards our style of writing. We specifically go to this skate park because of its current layout. So I really don't want to see anything happen to that layout. If the park were to get expanded, you guys are going to tear out, I think, that little ledge that separates the tan park and the skate park. Okay, thank you for listening.
And I'll just say, I know I did direct you to stand here. It may be best to stand like kind of around where Ryan's sitting, so you can see the timer, just so you can pace yourself. But thank you. Yes, here for the next speaker, Lingong. The next speaker is Patrick Fudeng.
Oh, Fudeng.
Fudeng, you're in the right position.
Easy, easy. Thanks for the time. Appreciate it. I'm proud to stand. San Mateo is my hometown. I don't live here now, but I've lived here for 25 plus years. I live in San Francisco now, too. I've also spent 20 or so years skating Shoreview since I was in seventh grade. So it's a special place in my heart, and it served me well. I'd like to advocate for kind of a fusion. I think, given the budgets that are presented there, there's probably a possibility for repaving or resurfacing and maybe expansion. Maybe even with a conversation with Zach, there could be a potential, you know, give professional building parts to get creative in the budget and also kind of leverage doing two things at once. I also do want to echo the sentiments about lights. Since the park was built, tennis court, basketball court had lights, a skateboard did it. Something always seemed kind of off about that. And with the potential of that whole space getting redone, maybe there's some sort of way to incorporate lighting into the skate park as well. We don't want to get greedy, but skate park does need a bit of improvement. And with a bit of conversation, I think, a lot of good stuff to come. I do want to say, priority wise, one and two would be the priorities that I would suggest. Hopefully, a combination of the two for the discussion, so I think both would be possible. And also, good points about pump tracks. There are, there are some close by. Historically, the skate park has been pretty like skateboard focused, and I do think it would be potentially good to kind of keep it that way. But I do think San Mateo should consider other options for people that might not skateboard. That's all I have to say, but I do think there's a lot of possibility here, and I just want to say thank you. Appreciate the enthusiasm. Revampment going on there. So thanks. Appreciate it.
And our last speaker is Ryan.
Montse.
Montse.
Hello, everyone. My name is Ryan Montse. I've been working in this city since 97. I was, I've been advocating for skate parks. I think I stood in this room when I was 16 years old in 1996. That's me. I'm 45, just over. When we were advocating back then, the, the mayor then was really in the corner of the skate community, and we were promised three skate parks. They said, we're going to give you guys three skate parks, and they're going to be small skate parks. We're going to get one in Shoreview. Shoreview was built, and we were so stoked. It had the most buttery, smooth ground, the ledges. It was unlike anything that existed anywhere nearby here, and people from all over came by. We were confused as to why we didn't get lighting, and we were told it's because skateboards are too loud, and it is. I didn't thought that the basketball court was louder, but that's, that's related. Then the Beresford Park was built, and it was a block. Some people like it, but let's be honest, it's maybe one of the worst skate parks in the Bay Area. And then we didn't get our third park. For the last 18 or about 17 years, I've had my own business in downtown San Mateo. I knew Atlas. I've also served on the board of the Downtown San Mateo Association as vice president, and have just really worked to try to get our community and youth a place to go that, that would maybe meet more needs than what's currently being offered. And we've begged for that third park. To date, 18 years later, that third park isn't on the table. But we're learning that we have a budget to get lights that we probably should have got originally. Something about that does seem off. Part two is, if you notice that the, the basketball court is perfectly flat, yet for some reason the skate park is lumpy and uneven. We believe that it was built incorrectly, and to get it corrected is, is awesome. And we're, we're really excited, and I think having the fresh ground will be great. I do think that if I were to ask for my ideal scenario, and, and from all the feedback that I've received at our store, and it's unfortunate that more people aren't here today. They showed up last week and, and the meeting got caught off, and I think that like took a little steam out of a few folks, but they, they, the feedback that it's been related over and over, if we can get this expansion and get the ground resurfaced, that would be the, the biggest win. The lighting would be great as well. It'd be nice to have a place to skate at night. Something about that feels, to me and my heart, it feels off to say, well, we're not going to get this ground, or we're not going to get this expansion because this thing that should have been given to us from day one, now we're going to get it. So I would say that from the overall feedback that I've received, get this expansion, have a little transition at the end so that there's, you know, maybe like a transitional, even though this intent, this park was intended to be a street park. Having that element, the expansion, the ground, we're stoked, and good job on Zach Warfar. He's one of the best in the frickin' world. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you to all the members of the public for offering your comments. Staff, do you have any response to or points clear?
I just want to talk a little bit about the available funds. So parts of a project is, of course, construction costs, but there's also soft costs, which involves consultant costs, like Zach's consultant fee and project management time for staff to manage it. So in this number that you budget, we have to accommodate hard costs, construction costs, and soft costs, administration costs, consultant costs, and any kind of permit fees or whatnot. So it's not just all going to construction. I just wanted to clarify that.
So were those soft costs, were they not included in that?
All right, public comment is over. So unfortunately, it can't be a back and forth, but I think perhaps there was a question that could have been gleaned, but I'll let King respond to it.
Their cost estimates provided from Warmboot's report and ours in, in the staff report are just construction costs?
Thank you. Thank you.
I guess the only other, um, side note I would like to add is, um, you know, when you're getting cost estimates, it really is, you know, kind of throwing, um, something to the wall and figuring out a bit thick. So the reason why we're going through the process this way is to get a prioritization so that we know once we go out to bid, we may be able to phase in other aspects of the project if there's additional funds. You know, when we get our, um, our bids back, you know, we can see what flexibility we have, um, and incorporate those improvements, um, you know, based on the feedback that we get. Um, we are looking citywide at improving lighting at parks. So hopefully, that will be something that will be coming forward, um, regardless of which way we go. But we wanted to give you all an opportunity to weigh in. If you thought that was the most important thing for us to do, then we would try and utilize the funds, um, available to us to prioritize that um, over some of the other things. But I think, um, our goal is to accomplish everything, but we can't always do that with the funds that we have. Um, and so if we get cost estimates that come back and say are relatively close to be able to do two of the three things, um, you know, we will certainly go to city council and ask for a budget adjustment. But I think, you know, for us to be knowledgeable about what the priorities are so we can get something done as soon as possible, um, I think there's a way to do a phase approach. So that's why we're asking for, um, guidance on that.
Great. Um, thank you, um, for that. So, um, next, we will take questions and comments from the commission. So just for clarification, we'll take questions and comments from the commission, and then we'll go through and, and kind of discuss and deliberate around the options. So questions and comments first. I'll start to my lecture. Um, sorry, I do have a couple of questions, um, that I think people have a call will either hint at or, um, already address. And one of them was, um, uh, the hybrid fees, right? So just as, as Joanna just very nicely told us that, is there an option for us to do something that's hybrid? So you've already answered that question for the group, which I think is great. A question I've always had, though, is, this is the budgetary money that we are getting, you know, from the city. Uh, but is there options for raising, uh, private funds that can augment? Um, so, you know, we do a big fundraiser or something. Can it, that augment and have a light named in honor of someone here, you know?
Well, naming policy is a whole nother discussion. But certainly, we would be happy to, you know, facilitate, uh, and support any kind of fundraising.
Okay. So that was just something I would ask.
And we're always also looking at grant funds for different, um, projects. Um, so, and, you know, one of the things that we're putting forward for the lighting is a grant request for lighting upgrades in the parks. So, um, if we're able to fund that through a grant, that's obviously doesn't take away from this project. So that's the way we're looking at trying to optimize.
Okay. My last question, um, would be the wonderful suggestions from the young lads that had there. I don't, I'm assuming that wasn't kind of first thought of in, in original design that Zach's put together? But is that something we can go back to him and ask if that could be added to it? Or is that something like the gentlemen have said, that there's an option for it? Not make it the strong, um, a track, um, something like that? Uh, but, you know, there's another, uh, location for that, and that's kind of what we're advocating at this.
Yeah, so, um, you know, I just actually was able to visit the new South San Francisco skate park and pump track that's adjacent to it, um, which is super awesome. Um, and, um, I think that, um, one of the areas of opportunity for the city of San Mateo is for a pump track. I don't think that this site necessarily is conducive to being able to facilitate that necessarily, but I certainly see the interest in it. And, um, you know, it's something that I think will be on our radar for future projects.
Last question. With adding the, um, lighting to have the gentleman's come at a, a later time, is there any other studies that's been done around security or impact to the area having what wouldn't have had a group of people there after hours or at some point? Is there an impact study or any knows done of what would that extra traffic add at that later time, uh, for the, the community that's there?
Yeah, I mean, um, I don't know, uh, if, I mean, we haven't done any impact studies of that nature. Um, certainly, um, you know, we, uh, analyze, um, the feedback from our park rangers, from our police department about issues, and we don't seem to have any out there. I'm not saying any, but there are not, um, there are not issues that are, you know, happening all the time, um, that I would need as something that needs to be addressed.
All right. Thank you. Those are the only questions I had. Great. Um, Vice Chair Richard.
Well, you have taken virtually all of your questions.
I know. That's why I wanted to go first.
Uh, thank you all for your comments today, and thank you for your presentation. Um, I'm a public speaker and if you're ancient, no way. Um, I have one question for King, uh, and this is sort of a Joe homeowner approach question. Uh, so I've walked around the skate park. I used to live right around the corner there for, uh, four years. Uh, it's a, it's a lovely park. But I've walked around that skate park, and there are lights everywhere around. There are lights on the basketball court, there are lights on the walkway, there are lights on the tennis court, there are lights in the parking lot. Might there not be a very cost-effective way to utilize the wiring and the, uh, extensions that are literally already right there to provide greatly improved lighting, if not the, uh, however many Candellas we're getting?
Oh. Thank you for asking that question. We asked that same question. And, uh, in one of the scenarios, we were actually looking at reusing, uh, one of the existing poles to refit the fixture instead of a single head to do a double head.
That's exactly what I was thinking as I looked at it.
Right. But that only takes care of one side. We have to have lights on all four sides. So the other three, three sides are potentially two sides, because there's one of them. Tennis court and one of the basketballs that we might be able to use. But the other two, they require new poles. And with new poles, you have to get wire in, so you have to trench to get them.
Right. So there, potentially, there could be some cost mitigation or did your exploration of that result in, no, we can't really say a cost?
Um, there might be some cost savings there. Um, and, and if I may expound on this a little bit more, we also looked into LED lights. Uh, I'm sorry, solar lights, which do not require, uh, trenching for wires. That might be a cost-effective way. Uh, but there's different pros and cons for that. Whereas LED lights, if something goes, uh, you know, wrong with the, the light, you just replace the light. Uh, if we're solar, if something goes wrong with the light, you replace the light. If something goes wrong with the battery which powers the light, that's a cost that's more expensive. So, uh, we haven't really studied that in depth, but there's down-road costs that we haven't been able to count.
Well, glad to see that so many angles for being, uh, of that, both for the execution of the project and for the funding and sources of funding. Uh, two quick comments. Uh, in, in thinking of the priorities, there's clearly, what, what I am hearing is this, a strong ask for increasing the priority on the lighting. Uh, the, the other, uh, general comment is that, uh, I sense there may be some flexibility in the budgets, but that really depends on the quotes that we get. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your presentation and for the public, for your panel and for making your comments. I had a question, which was, but the answer, so I'll make your comment. I'm glad to hear that the city is considering a phase approach. I think that you, um, speak to, but with one word, two, two, sorry, two words. Yeah, because I think, yeah, the lighting, because I do walk around there. I actually saw, saw the, the scooter, right? And some areas of the skate park were really dark and, yeah, safety issues. And I'm also glad that, um, that, um, I'm also glad that we are going to, uh, fill up the cracks on the, the basketball that is currently empty. Because I also, yeah, I also think, um, with the cracks, that's the only support. There should be sufficient people, then so that, um, just two times in a shot. So that's just a comment.
Commissioner. So thank you for the presentation and all the comments. Um, I too, in ninety-six, was sixteen years old. Uh, and I now have a twenty-year-old and an eight, almost eighteen-year-old. So at that time also, my son was really into skateboarding and, you know, biking. We were trying, getting, getting really into it. Um, and so, um, I remember when that park was built and kind of like the struggles that we were going through and all the passion that was around the skateboarding community to try to get something, you know, that momentum going. Um, so I'm happy to see that we're talking about this today. Um, I think that priority, of course, is ensuring safety, um, which of course is the ground that you're gonna skateboard on. Um, and of course, looking through all the comments, it just seems like a lot of people go to that park and they're saying, "Wow, it's like a really crappy shape," basically, uh, which makes it unusable. Um, and so I think that would be a priority. But also, I think it would be amazing if we can also figure out a way to provide more safety at night for the people who come out for hours, who work during the day. Um, my immediate mind went to the lighting at Joinville. Uh, because once they, I live across the street from Joinville, and once they installed that lighting, I immediately had lighting in my living room because it was so bright. Um, but I think that's more along the lines of maybe stadium lighting. I don't know what kind of lighting that is. But I would think that one of those would illuminate the entire park almost. Um, so maybe we can look into something like that. Or, um, it's good that we're kind of looking into, um, ways that we can build, maybe do the actual resurfacing along with lighting or, you know, bringing elements of each, um, depending on the budget, some of its, like, come through. Thank you. Mr. Donald.
Uh, well, I just wanna say, um, thank you for the presentation and for all the lovely people that showed up. Um, it's really cool to see all the passion in your guys' speeches and stuff. Um, as far as questions go, a lot of my questions have been answered by my fellow commissioners. Um, so I'll leave with, um, um, I guess just like a clarifying question, like the lights would be on, like, at like a certain time in the evening till the morning, right? Theoretically, if we were to.
The lights would shut up.
Okay. Oh.
Which is, yeah, I think it's, yeah, I think it'd be a lot, but.
Okay. Thank you. No further questions.
Okay. Great. Um, so I, I wanna say a few things. Um, first of all, thank you to my fellow commissioners for their excellent questions and comments. And thank you to all of you for showing up, uh, on a chili for San Mateo, at least, uh, Wednesday evening, uh, to give comment. Um, obviously, it shows you care a lot about this community, um, likewise. Um, I think there's a few things going on here. One is that, um, you know, a couple, a few decades ago, San Mateo made a significant prom, uh, promise around skate parks. And, uh, that is a promise that has been yet to, it's yet to be fulfilled entirely. Um, you know, my understanding is that Shoreview is really a good skate park, um, that needs, uh, some love and some kind of facelift. Um, and that Barrisford, uh, at least when I've been there, um, the use of the, the skate area is sometimes by skateboarders and sometimes by a lot of other people doing all kinds of other things. Um, and, you know, that third park, uh, I will just tell you, I put two question marks on my paper. Um, so I think what I'm hearing, uh, and what I, I wanna make sure is, is said during this meeting is that, um, the space at Shoreview should remain focused and centered around skateboarding. Um, um, because really, it seems that we've built one true skate park, uh, or skate space and sort of another skate space, all sort of. Um, so I think keeping that focus is really important. Um, while I take note that the, there's a pump track in Menlo Park, I think if you're the ages of, of my San Mateans behind me, uh, Menlo Park is pretty far away. Um, so prioritizing bicycle features and BMX at probably another location, uh, I think is a priority for the monitoring, um, but heard and noted. Um, I, I will say that, um, I think that, uh, it's really important that if we choose option two in some way or another, an expansion of the skate park, that there is a significant, uh, community outreach effort done to make sure that the elements in that expansion are, um, sort of true to form, uh, of, of keeping this space truly a skate space, um, and that it doesn't end up like the losing which Barrisford has used. Not that it's bad necessarily, it's just that it's sort of lost its, um, its focus. Um, so making sure that that's prioritized, um, uh, should be opt to expand the, the skate area. Um, I wanna make sure it's really, um, focused. Um, to that extent, King, if, uh, we do, if option one is moved forward, sorry, it's a bit packet. Option one, uh, uh, replace the existing platform. That doesn't, to be clear, that's just sort of resurfacing, that's not changing the design of the space. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Um, so I think, you know, in general, my understanding is, and, um, I find you prove wrong, is that the skate space as it is, as it exists today, is, like, the design is okay. Um, so fine, but making sure that it connects well with that expansion space and the features in that expanded space are sort of keeping along with the space. I'm on the journey, it's prioritized and it will be considered. And, um, it sounds like, uh, you know, some natural partnerships around where we can pull feedback from. Um, other than that, I think, um, you know, I appreciate the, the comments around, um, phasing and funds. And I know personally our commissioners, um, you know, understanding the cost of public, uh, projects, uh, as opposed to something maybe to the backyard. This is still a surprising, um, realization in terms of those, those total numbers. Um, okay, with that, um, I will ask for comments or recommendations around the priority list. Um, I will remind my fellow commissioners, the staff recommendation is one, two, three, like, first, second, and third. Um, with option one being the top priority, which is, um, resurfacing the existing platform. Option two being the second priority, um, which is the expansion of the park. And option three being the lights. Um, uh, and so the staff recommendation is, is those, uh, sort of in order. Um, but certainly, I, I would take, uh, comments as to why a different order should be changed. Does anyone want to speak on the argument for, I would, the staff recommendation for a different? Mr. President. Yes, Mr. Trump, please.
Comment on that.
Please.
Um, so if we were to do a combination of referrals, so I went with one and three, but there's been some comments from Joanna that potentially three, the lighting, could come from another source. Uh, there's some different options for and things like that. Um, is it that we're gonna go back to the designer? Because like, like King said, this isn't finalized, so what, what is, what, what's gonna happen? It's more of an exploratory, we're getting, uh, recommendations. If we put that in order, it can go back, and potentially it could be all three in the middle. We'll come back to another, oh, or?
So how I envision it is, based on whatever the recommended top priority is, we'll move forward with trying to implement that priority with a design to come back for approval for implementation. Once we go out to bid, if there's additional funds available, we will pursue the next priority. Um, you know, and so that's, I mean, obviously, adding the lighting is a bit easier than doing the expansion because the expansion does require quite a bit of community input and feedback, back and forth with the design consultant. Um, so that's more involved, certainly can be second or third or first. Um, but I think that that will help us manage how we facilitate, um, and. Uh, but I think that that will help us manage how we facilitate, um, implementing this project. Thank you.
I, I have a comment.
Excellent. Vice Chair, uh, Richard.
Uh, very briefly, uh, number one I see is clueless top priority, because if it's not safe, if it's not smooth, then two and three are just moot points. So we need to make it safe, we need to make it smooth. Uh, so one would be my top priority. Um, I also get a clear sense that we need the lighting. And so I would make number three my second priority. So I would switch this priority as one through two.
Excellent. Does anyone want to make a party or comment around this? Or would someone like to make a motion for us to recommend that or a little bit? And create with, uh, Vice Chair. Would you like to make a motion?
Yes, and I'd make a motion. I move that we recommend, uh, solutions, one for replacement of the platform. It's number two being the installation of lighting, then as budget move of it will be number, uh, I'm sorry, number one for replacement, number three for installation of lighting and number two for expansion of.
Excellent. Okay, so we have a priority list for option one in first place, option three in second place, and option two in third place. Do I have a second for that motion? Excellent. Thank you, Commissioner John.
Can we add a asterisk to that or no?
Um, please make a comment and then you can take a vote.
Um, so I mentioned the repaving the entry was not required. It'd be nice to see what that would do to the budget in regards to just replacing the main section there and the remaining.
We can certainly, yeah, we can certainly.
Okay, so.
Fill that in as an add-on.
So Commissioner Trapp, you accept that addendum?
Yes.
Excellent. So what we're going to be voting on is option one, three and two would be asked to price out both including and not including repaving the entry approach. Okay, let's call the roll.
Commissioner Trapp?
I, yes.
Commissioner Campbell?
Hi.
Commissioner, uh, Tiaf?
Hi.
From, uh, Vice Chair Richard?
Aye.
And Chair.
Aye.
Vice Chair.
Such an agreeable group. Um, excellent. Thank you very much. You're all welcome to stay, but you do not have to stay. Um, for old business item number four, financial sustainability strategy policy.
Thank you. Very much appreciated. Appreciate your remarks. Thanks for the comments.
Okay.
Was that, was there supposed to be online?
I know how to clear around. Text me later. All right. Thank you, thank you. Thank you. Okay, with that, thank you, everyone. Excellent. Thank you very much. See, I told you I could clear around. And I'm going to give this. Excellent. Thank you very much. Okay, with that. Okay, with that, I will recall business manager.
Why did, did you start it?
Um, Suzette Solomon.
Right.
Give us a presentation.
All right, I'll, I'm, I'm gonna, well, I'm gonna do a couple of things. So all of you were there, I believe all of you were there for our study session on the, the financial sustainability policy. Right? Okay. Um, it feels like a long time ago, but it was only September thirtieth. Um, so, so we are bringing this back forward to you with a draft of the policy that we would like to bring forward as part of the city's fee schedule process, which happens in April. So this is just a continuation of that. And to, in that order, we have Jamie Savage here, who is the president and principal of a hundred and ten percent consultant that we use, which she founded in, in twenty-ten. She has tons of experience in the municipal parks and rec and other parks and rec kind of, uh, things. And she has been an instructor in higher education on these subjects. So she is well versed in that. And she's going to kind of, from what you see up on the screen that Chantal is sharing, is the draft, which you also have in front of you, I believe. Uh, so Jamie, um, is gonna wow us with, she's amazing and wow her, her every, everything knowledge of parks and rec.
Thank you, Suzette. I appreciate it. Uh, good evening. Uh, good to be here with all of you. Um, I am a, a new face, uh, representing our team. Uh, I think all of you've had the opportunity to meet my colleague Farrell Bowler, who unfortunately took ill, uh, yesterday, and so was not able to join you. And I'm, um, stepping in in her place. Um, as was mentioned, uh, what you have in front of you is the financial sustainability policy draft, uh, which is accompanying, um, the fee schedule. Uh, essentially, it's a complement to your fee schedule. And really, the, the, the principal, uh, purpose of this evening is to give you, uh, a rather high-level overview, a bit of a look back in the mirror to how this policy was created, kind of the underbelly that led to the development of this draft. Um, obviously for your review discussion consideration this evening before it proceeds to council for approval. Um, real quickly, we, uh, lead quite a few, um, I would say arguably more than quite a few, but a lot of financial sustainability projects across the United States. We work with municipalities as well as special districts. And, um, the financial sustainability strategy process that, uh, we had the privilege of working alongside Joanne and the entire team to create, uh, really again, became the feeder to the development of this policy. Uh, just a brief overview of the steps that, that led us to this point. Um, we actually started by creating a service categories, which are actually represented, they're identified within, uh, the policy that, uh, really serve as, uh, a, a way to categorize all of the services provided by park and recreation to the community. Uh, you'll notice each category includes a definition as well as some example services. And adjacent to each of those categories is the cost recovery goal that's been established. Um, as well, I believe the majority of you had the opportunity to participate in the beneficiary of service work session, which allowed, um, representative community members such as yourselves, as well as the professional staff, the opportunity to rank, not prioritize, but rank those categories from the category you believed aligns most with the definition of common good, uh, to the category you believe to be more individualized, more exclusive, more specialized. And that helped, uh, really develop the continuum. And then, of course, behind the scenes and what we call the heavy lifting is the cost of service analysis. And that's where we work with your team to identify, uh, all of your revenues and expenditures, uh, attribute those expenditures to the services that you offer in order for you to understand what it costs you to provide services to the community. Um, that became a baseline as well as some other guiding principles, um, in, in helping the organization establish, I would suggest credible and a very well, um, thought out, if you will, thoughtful and intelligent cost recovery goals that are intended to be achievable and based upon, uh, real data. So what you have incorporated, of course, in this policy statement or this policy itself is the policy statement, essentially what is this a policy intended to do, uh, what is its purpose essentially, uh, as well as some definitions around cost recovery and subsidy, the categories that represent the service menu of the organization, um, and then the model that's on the last page that includes the beneficiary of service exercise, again, the ranking, along with the cost recovery goals that have been established. So at this time, um, I'm gonna turn it back over to Suzette. Um, and again, we're here this evening to take any questions you might have as we work towards, uh, moving this forward to council for adoption.
Exactly. So, I mean, I think that we have put together, Tracy has been an integral part of this. We have put together something that is really going to assist staff and empower staff to look at our programming in a different way and look at, look at this and really be able to look at each individual program easily, quickly, and know where they are and where they need to go. Um, but I'm really interested to hear, after your experience in September, what you think of the policy draft and if you have any comments or questions about it.
Okay. Um, great. Thank you. Um, so is that, does that conclude your presentation?
Yeah.
Excellent. So, um, I will ask, first of all, I will open public comment and ask, have you received any public comment cards on this item?
No public comment.
Excellent. And again, we're only doing public comment in person, uh, just for everyone's. Whatever. All right. Um, I will close public comments then and, um, ask, do the commissioners have questions or comments, points they would like to clarify? A moment perhaps to shuffle around the papers. I will start with Commissioner O'Callaghan. When you're ready. Um, if you have anything.
No questions. No, um, I, all I can say is I'm in total agreement of this. It just makes absolute sense. Um, and the way that it's ranked, um, just by from one to eleven, I mean, that's exactly how I would rank it if I had a choice to rank it. So, um, and I don't have any questions. I think all the questions were answered from last time.
Excellent. Thank you. Um, Commissioner Tiaf?
Thank you for discussing this policy. I don't know.
Okay. Vice Chair, Gocher.
Uh, I'll break it into high level and low level. So at a high level, this is great. And the, uh, the strategy behind it, this, this is really good, very understandable. At low level, I have no idea what's going on in here. It's way too much.
That's the next item.
I can make no decision. But besides, this is too much for me to digest.
That's item number five. When do we get there?
But noted, noted. But yes, that's very good to know. Noted. I, I like the visual con- contract.
Yeah. Um, anything else on this? On the current item? No? Very good. Commissioner Trapp?
Um, again, agree with my fellow commissioners. Uh, the only thing I would add, and of course, this is my data background, um, is, is this particular graph gonna be in the public documents or is that gonna be on the public website?
Um, well, we have to refer this to our finance department who actually publishes the fee schedule. So I'm not sure exactly what that conversation, they have reviewed this and they actually had, we, we met with the finance, uh, department on this, this item prior to bringing it to you. They have, uh, signed off on this. They feel positive about this. I don't know how this actually will kind of fit in with the actual document itself. Um, because it's a little bit different to this style.
But I think that, um, regardless of if they're able to incorporate it into the fee schedule the way it looks here, we can always add it to a one page on our website in order to create more transparency and usability.
But was there a comment on the accessibility of this?
Yeah, two things. Uh, one, uh, which we should say, uh, love the access, makes it very easy for you to kind of figure out what it is you're proposing in the directional, uh, percentage of things, that what's gonna be subsidized versus non-subsidized. Uh, the color scheme and the, the thought and all that is not probably the most appealing for accessibility and for, um, readability. So if we are gonna put this in public space, that would be the only thing I would want to do is to address the design of, of the looking pillar. But the actual content that it is, is wanted.
Yeah, ultimately, that item would come down, the way it's presented in the, in the fee schedule will come down to the finance department, but we can work on the design of it.
Great. Um, uh, you, Commissioner John.
Um, no questions. Um, I just agree with the sentiment that it, it, it's like, it's a really awesome plan. Yeah, I mean, only thing, um, like Commissioner Trapp said, would just be to like alter the visuals a little bit. Yeah, that's pretty much it. I mean, it's stunning. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I would just, uh, say that, uh, a little bit of explanation, um, I think goes a long way. You know, I think some people might see a hundred percent subsidy and go, what it's like, what are we subsidizing? And then we realize, ah, it's just the things that we all understand as a hundred percent subsidized, which is to say that the park exists and is maintained. Um, there is, I'm sure, a much more elegant way of saying that. Um, but if there's some kind of public documents around, um, sort of how much things are subsidized, uh, making sure that there's, um, pretty reasonable plain language around that. Um, I did have one clarifying question, which I feel like I also asked about in September and I don't remember the answer. Um, but for, um, things like childcare that have, uh, a forty to seventy percent range, um, are there low-income waivers or other kinds of things that can get you to a higher subsidy, should we demonstrate?
So this, uh, policy does not address our recreation fee assistance program.
Okay.
That, um, this policy is how we set the prices. It does not, at this point in time, change the recreation fee assistance program. Do you wanna speak to?
No, I, I, I think, um, you know, we are going to be looking at, at that in upcoming fiscal year and reassessing that. Once we have this established and start to do the pricing, um, we'll look at that policy and see what improvements and opportunities there are. But yes, that does not, what is here does not mean that's what someone pays necessarily, if they're able to, um, participate.
The current, um, sixty and thirty percent reductions in costs are, are, will stand. No, but, so this just affects the, the.
Like the advertising price. Okay, great. Um, okay, um, great. I think this is excellent. Um, you know, I will just remind everyone, it was a fun activity to prioritize these. Um, at our last, at the, the last time we saw all of this. And, uh, Jamie, I hope that your colleague feels better soon. Um, on that, um, are we just, do you want us to vote that we approve this?
Yes.
Or do we have any?
No, I don't know. Like sometimes it's just like, hey, look at this.
Um, very good. Okay, so, uh, with that, I will, uh, say to my fellow commissioners, um, if you would like to bring up any additional points for discussion, now would be the time. But also I would happily take a motion to, uh, recommend this, uh,
Adoption.
Adoption of the financial sustainability strategy policy. Comments, questions, motions?
Question?
Oh, there we go.
Are we voting on the, this level or are we voting on the actual numbers?
We are voting on the policy. You are still looking at the wrong item.
It's all the same item.
So why don't you like one thing?
I have quite a skill for turning this simple into confusing.
So what we're looking at is the financial sustainability policy, which is, goes until.
Yeah, those.
Where it says new business agenda report here, that is item number five. We are on item number four. So the policy just includes these three pages. That's all your, what we teach adults right now. It ends with a beautiful chart.
Well, I found the chart. The other two pages are somewhere in here.
Oh, no.
But I'm assuming that the chart sums it up.
The chart does sum it up.
Excellent. That's perfect.
Great teamwork in this commission. Okay. Do I have any clarifying questions, comments or a motion to enter? I move that we adopt the college for guys. Excellent. So thank you, Commissioner Trapp. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Please call the roll. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Trapp?
Aye.
Uh, Vice Chair Richard?
Aye.
Chair Fields?
Aye.
Commissioner Chiapi?
Aye.
And Commissioner Ocampo?
Aye.
Commissioner Carey, Vice Chair?
Excellent. Thank you very much. Now we are on item number five, which is the proposed Parks and Recreation Fee Schedule for fiscal year twenty six.
And we can let Jamie go to bed because she's in a later time zone.
And we will say thank you to Jamie. We hope your colleague feels better. Thank you for stepping in and your.
Thank you. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Alright, very good. So with that, uh, Jamie will leave us. Uh, again, item number five. Again, we will hear from our business manager, Susan Silverman. Do you have a presentation?
We do.
Excellent.
Let's try and make it a little more digestible. Um.
We appreciate that very much.
And I, and I want to acknowledge before we start that the, the, it's the way we have to present this, this fee schedule. We don't, we don't control this document. We have to, all these red lines, all this stuff, it makes it very hard to read and I, I want to acknowledge that. And the first few pages are all strike throughs.
Yes, I was just noticing that.
So that is where the, the policy, we just, that's what it's replacing. So
Cool.
That might make some people happy, but I just want to acknowledge that it is very difficult to read, um, and we know it. Uh, okay, so these are the, the fee schedule updates and generally we have focused on what you just saw. That is where we have put our time and energy into revamping that. We have not made much changes to the general fee schedule, anything. So that was for our activities, right? All of those things you see in the activity guide. That is what we just kind of, there's still a lot of other stuff in the fee schedule. So this is that, that, that delta between what we just talked about and what's that big long list that you have in front of you. And so we can go ahead and go to the first slide. So we are given the consumer and price index by our finance department. And it was two point four percent, which is good. Inflation is not as bad as it has been. So that's great. And what we do is just to make life easier, we round to the nearest dollar for all of these. So the baseline is every price in here is increased by two point four percent, rounds to the nearest dollar. And that's, that's all for that slide. Um, so we did have a few fees that we increased more than the consumer price index and they were all within golf. Um, and it was all within weekend fees. And basically the consumer price index led these fees to be about one dollar. We increased them by two dollars. And the way that fee was generated was by looking at municipal golf courses throughout the Bay Area and looking at their fees. So this was not based on the consumer price index, but on the other comparables, right? So this was, that was the, the basis for that. And that ended up being, I think, five fees overall, four fees. It was not a large amount. Um, it was basically general admission and resident green fees for the weekends and then the, the weekend twilight rates. Um, all the other golf fees were within the consumer price index. Um, next slide. So unfortunately, there's also some red lines because we tried to make it more readable. But in the red line version, it's not easier. Um, maybe we should have given you a clean copy and added red line copy noted for next year. Um, but what happened was there were facility fees, like facility rentals, like of Faresford Center or MLK Center, if you want to rent a room. And then we had these other facilities like the Japanese Garden that you can rent or picnic you can rent. And to streamline them and actually eliminate some double entry, we kind of merged them all. So I will tell you that nothing was changed. It was just relocated. Uh, so it looks like a lot of change, but it's really a lot of relocation, um, of those fees. Some other cleanup items that we addressed, um, you know, it's just, it's a big document, as you noted. And so things get misplaced or mislaid or separated. Um, again, it's an Excel document for anyone who's familiar and trying to format things in Excel can be a challenge that our finance department takes on every year. Um, so kudos to them for trying to make it readable. But it, it, I, I understand it's a challenging document and, um, we hope that our previous presentation shows that we're working to make it more user friendly. So, is there one more slide?
There's one.
Yes. Okay. And so then there is another fee that we set, which is not based on the consumer price index. And that is our park and leeway impact fees. So that is a development fee. Those fees are adjusted annually based on population and the price of developed residential property, right? Not all property, but residential property. So there's usually a plus or minus percentage that we hit every year to adjust those fees. Um, and those fees are specifically set aside for capital improvement projects such as skate park investments. They cannot be used for other anything else. They have to be used for that. Um, and then one more. So if you find this stuff fascinating, you can attend the council meeting on this in April. Um, because there's a whole lot more fees than what we have. Um, uh, but that is what we have on fee schedule. I try, I hope that that is short and sweet and I am more than willing to take any questions at this point.
Okay. Um, that concludes your presentation.
That does.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Um, I will ask a question that I am confident I have the answer to, which is, um, I, first I will open public comment and I will ask, do you have any speakers list?
No public comment from this side.
Excellent. So I will close public comments. And I will ask my fellow commissioners, do you have comments or questions about what we just saw at the start?
So, um, for some reason I thought the consumer price index was going to be higher, just given the prices like food being so crazy today. Um, but, um, it's not a, a dollar, a couple of dollars increase. It's so little in my opinion. And I do agree with increasing a little bit more for the municipal golf course. Um, make it comparable to other golf courses in the, in the Bay Area. This makes sense. Um, one question I had was I, I just noticed that, um, are we taking questions?
Yes.
Um, the, like the Joinville Pool Fee, it, for some reason it seems so low to me. Um, like it could be higher, also given the fact that kind of what's happening with the Joinville Pool and it needs to be, this is another issue completely, but renovated or it needs help. Um, and so how did we come up with the fees for Joinville Pool, also given the fact that the team pool is a little bit higher?
Well, I will tell you that specifically we really did look at the pool fees addressed, like dive into them for this session because it is.
Dive into.
Oh, no, I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry. I had to do. Because, you know, it's, it's, I don't, we don't even, you know, we're, we're wonder, go ahead, please.
Yeah.
Yes, so, keep going with.
Yes, sorry. Uh, so there are several different areas, um, of the fee schedule and it's kind of like feeding an elephant. You can't do everything all at once. Um, and so we'd have to prioritize what we focus our efforts on. And so there are several different, um, fee structures, like our facility rentals, our picnic rentals, um, and our, uh, field use fees. And those are kind of all encompassing studies of their own that would require community input and outreach and analysis. So we really kind of focused our efforts on this fiscal sustainability policy. And so we will get to those other ones for more robust updates in the coming years. Um, I would say that one of the ones that we're most interested in reviewing and evaluating is our field use policy and the fees associated to that because we have such high usership and the, um, ratio of, um, cost for use of the field versus how much income we make. So we try and prioritize, our, our Joinville Pool is only open a couple of months of the year. So it's not really the hugest effort to, you know, put in, put our eggs in that basket to analyze that at the time, at this time. Uh, but it's certainly something that we will look at in the future.
So in order to generate that, the previous item, you know, the first thing we did was a cost of service analysis. So it is on our radar to do something similar for these other fees. But again, it, it takes a large amount of staff time and then, you know, getting consultant on board to do that. And, and so we have to break it up.
A lot of the main parts.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any questions?
I don't have any questions.
Okay. Um, Vice Chair, what's your questions, comments? I know you're studying this document very thoroughly.
Well, as, as many of you know, I do have passion for the book. But, uh, really simple comment. You've taken something that's quite complex and you've applied a very simple methodology to it, uh, that even I can understand. And so I, I think that's a really very good approach. Uh, question, I'll just demonstrate my ignorance. Are any, uh, is any of our funding that would impact fees at risk due to federal budget grant, uh, cancellations?
So, um, our, our impact fees are based on development. So if any development is impacted by a grant, I think that that would, you know, and, and I don't know what projects are kind of in the hopper for coming forward. There is a new federal law though, that allows people to pay their impact fees, um, later than they normally do. So at, I think, time of occupancy as opposed to time of the building permit. Um, so that will affect us, um, because that will push things out a bit, um, as far as timing goes. Not that every developer may take that approach, but that could be. So our planning has to adjust, um, due to that new legislation. So I think what, that's more on our radar. Um, I don't know of any, um, development projects that are grant funded, but that's just because I don't know why there could be.
Sure.
Yes.
So in a nutshell, um, uh, risk to federal grant cancellation is a secondary effect. There's potential secondary effect.
Right.
Okay, good. That's all I have. Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Trapp?
Thank you. Um, since you called it out on one of the slides golf at the extension, and then you also mentioned the cost of service, um, I got that correct. With the new Top Golf that went in, was there any consideration of the impact to that or even the leveling of fees compared to something that we go into?
So, oh, so can I just jump in here really quick? Um, so our, um, our golf manager thinks that, um, Top Golf will push people to golf at our facility, um, because it is just a driving range. So, um, we're hopeful that we will get more business as a result of the opening of that business. Um, but I don't know, I know that they just did their soft opening in December, so I don't know what kind of analysis went into driving range, um, comparatives, um, but that's certainly something I think we'll analyze next year to see if there's a drop off. Um, you know, or if any others significant impact to our driving range fees.
So I can tell you what the, so when, when setting those additional CPI fees, right, the, the higher ones, our golf manager looked at the, about ten municipal golf courses, you could like for like, right? It's, and then he also included, um, Crystal Springs, which is, because it's so hyper local. Although, you know, he kind of did two price, price analysis, one with, with Bristol Springs and one without. So that's how he kind of came to that set point where he picked it. So it was really kind of, you know, obviously maybe next year we would, he would include Top Golf. Um, but at the point where he was doing that, you know, they were just launching. So that's kind of, and maybe they would with our, because we have driving range fees too. So maybe we'd include it in that kind of analysis in the future. But that's how it was derived, was strictly with the, focused on the ten municipal Bay Area golf courses that he felt were most comparable to ours.
And then just a comment on the, because we were just talking about this. I'm assuming my orientation somewhere said that we have to print all this stuff for the meetings.
We don't, for the meetings that we have, um, large items with a lot of public comment and things, we just print the whole packet instead of trying to conceal it. But it's really up to the commission, what their preference is. Um, if the preference is that you don't get a packet, we're happy to, like, so it could be a direction in the commission.
I mean, certainly double sided printing.
I would love to have it electronically.
Okay.
Kind of obvious.
Um, Commissioner Trapp? Okay. Um, you, Commissioner Jomker, any comments, questions?
Um, no other question or comment.
Excellent. Um, I do have a question about impact fees. Do we have any currently available funds? That have been collected?
I believe we collected seventy million dollars last year in impact fees. Um, and so it actually was a very good year for us. Um, and some projects came in, um, that were sitting due to COVID, um, and, you know, that'll hold up going on. Um, and then we estimate, you know, uh, again, on what projects are in the planning application phase to the building permit phase. So it's, um, I don't know if we're, we're want to speak to that.
Four million dollars, but going back to the.
Wait, sorry, four million dollars is how much we anticipate this year?
We anticipate coming in possibly by the end of this year or maybe the beginning of next year. But it's all dependent with the new law that passed that now they can wait to pay that if they choose to towards the end of the process.
Yeah, we're all, all, and that's affecting all the city fees. We're all, it's certificate of occupancy and that's a state law. And we don't really know what to expect from that, um, and how that's all gonna roll out.
So fun.
Because also as impact fees go up, you could potentially have to pay higher fees. So, you know, it's six one half of them or another.
Yep. Um, okay. Um, uh, I would say that you know, in the city of San Mateo, we have a lot of, um, people who are longtime residents who are sometimes challenged by new development. Uh, whenever we're spending those impact fees on projects, we'd like to remind everyone, ask where the money came from. Um, if I might editorialize for a moment. Um, yeah. Um, other than that, um, you know, I think that the point that, uh, Commissioner Ocampo was perhaps making, or my interpretation of the point she was making is that, um, when we look at fees or when our staff looks at fees and, first of all, appreciate your time, um, that, uh, you know, we're charging the same or a very similar number for the same services and, and ideas. So, aquatic time, aquatic time. Um, so perhaps, I think, the question embedded there is perhaps, uh, you know, why is one, what are the prices of the other?
Uh huh. I think I can answer that.
Okay.
I think it's based on the square footage of the pool.
Aha.
Okay. It took my brain a little while.
Yeah, so it just like, I don't know, in my mind, like if it costs five dollars, it's going to cost five dollars to swim, so like, um, but that makes sense at least, to at least just like.
I think that you were speaking of the rental fee for the.
Yeah, so that's why. So, so one, you get to have a pool. Yeah. Alright, fair. Make, that makes a lot of sense. Great. Uh, mystery solved, at least today. Great. Well, I will say I appreciate this document. I know that financial documents can be tricky to get out. Um, I will, uh, remind all my fellow commissioners that, um, uh, if you would like instead an electronic version of this, I guess, uh, you know, we tried to, to staff, um, prior to our next meeting, I will say I would at least like, I do really like paper, but, um, if you get it double sided at least, that would be, uh, much appreciated. Um, I know the city does recycle, uh, and we appreciate you all for that. Um, okay. With that, I will say to my fellow commissioners, um, if you have an additional question or comment you would like to raise, um, now would be the time. Otherwise, um, I would love to entertain a motion to adopt this fee schedule for fiscal year twenty five. adopt this fee schedule for fiscal year twenty five, twenty six.
I move that we adopt this fee schedule for the year twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six.
Okay, excellent. Please call the roll.
Uh, Vice Chair Richard?
Aye.
And Commissioner Trapp?
Aye.
Chair Fields?
Aye.
Commissioner Chiapi?
Aye.
And Commissioner Compo? Motion for Vice Chair?
Fantastic. Consensus group, um, on that note, I will say that items now closed, and you will move to reports and announcements.
Sorry, they are a little lengthy, a little lengthy, but I will go quickly, we just haven't seen each other in a couple of months, so. I wanted to give an update that our Japanese garden has been featured in a new book, um, so I will leave it here for you all to peruse. Page seventy nine, um, our Japanese garden in the Central Park, so that is exciting news.
I lived in Japan for a year, and I guarantee you all, that garden is totally up and down, it's, it's the real stuff.
Um, so, um, also, hopefully you have been able to go by and see the new ADA improvements to the entrance of Ferrisford that is now open and available for people to utilize, but I'm seeing this coming out, um. We are also pleased to announce the launch of the pickleball pilot program at Ferrisford, um, we, um, have, uh, closed Court One, um, out at the tennis court facility there to do the restriking and other repairs, and so we anticipate that being open sometime next week. Um, and so, um, as part of the initiative, um, we are not taking reservations, um, on that court for tennis, so we have ceased that, um. And, uh, once we have a solid date, we will, um, move forward with six to eight months of, um, getting feedback and information to bring forward to you about, uh, moving forward with that program. Um, also, um, we are excited, um, to hopefully be bringing the Central Park Playground Contract Award, um, which is scheduled to be presented to the City Council at the February eighteenth meeting, um, and subsequently, a save the date for a groundbreaking ceremony will be following, so be on the lookout in your emails for that.
And that's for, this is phase one of.
Yes, phase one of four, the playground, the whole playground.
Very exciting.
Yes, it is very exciting, um, but I did want to mention that the current play structure at Central Park Playground, a main play structure is closed, um, it was damaged and, um, for safety, we had to close it. Um, and we did look into, um, the cost and timeline associated with repairing it to get it back open, and it just didn't make sense with the groundbreaking hopefully happening in the near future, um, so we will put up signage about nearby parks that people can utilize, um. But just wanted to let you know that that is, um, closed, um. Spring registration starts February eleventh for, um, our residents and February thirteenth for non-residents, this might be my favorite cover of all time. This gives space for the hunted best, um, for our summer camp activity guide release date, um, it is live online now and the, um, it will be in the mail to everybody in the coming, uh, weeks, and registration for summer is launched. Can't believe that's happening, um, and that being said, summer and camp aquatics information night is on Thursday, February twentieth, in the Oak Room, um, at the library from five to seven for people in case they need help with registration and they have questions, um. And then the last thing I want to mention is on the line, along the lines of a Top Golf, our, um, Police Activities League is hosting a fundraiser um, out at Top Golf on Thursday, February twenty seventh, um, it is to, um, uh, raise funds for their scholarship fund. Um, so if anybody is interested in learning more about that, um, event, please let me know and I will send you the information.
So the twenty sixth?
Twenty seventh.
Twenty seventh. Excellent.
Yes.
Um, anything else?
No.
Okay, do my commissioners have any announcements? Anybody, anybody?
Um, I can just say, like, the Central Park, that pending is exciting for me personally, I, I, I've been watching next door and people are kind of like, when is it gonna get started? So it's nice to be prepared.
Yes, highly anticipated, phase one of four, um, I will remind everyone, uh, that we have a special election coming up at the beginning of March. You should have gotten your ballot in the mail, um, if you haven't and you're registered to vote, we'll get to them, uh, and don't forget to vote. And with that, I will say, it's, uh, let's see, eight thirty five, uh, George?
Awesome.
Thanks, guys.